A call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 22, 2024. The first order of business is the approval, the approval of a bunch of stuff here. So should we do these separately, Rachel, I guess? Vote on them separately?
If you want, that might be easiest because I know some people like to abstain when they weren't actually at the meeting.
Okay.
So if you want to take it.
I'll do it one at a time then. The first, let's see, we're going to approve the November 13, 2024 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read over those? Any questions or changes?
Make a motion we approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I will abstain because I wasn't there.
Okay.
I'll do as well.
I need to abstain as well.
Johnson, Bowden, Henderson.
And we'd probably need you to abstain too.
Yes.
Right? Okay.
And that was for November 13th, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
That's correct. Okay. November 13th, yeah. Okay, the second is, is the approval of the December 11, 2024 Planning Commission And that, so I just realized that it's, the December meeting is the one that I missed, not the November, I was present at the November 13 minutes, so.
Okay. Should we do a clarification?
Yes.
And revote on the 13th then?
Yes, sorry about that. Got a lot going on.
Okay.
All right, let's redo the November 13 minutes, Planning Commission meeting minutes, because I was present at that, I was not present at the December. So all in favor, aye, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and then abstain is?
Abstained.
Henderson, Bowden, and Young.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Now moving on to the December 11, 2024 Planning Commission meeting minutes, do I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second? I don't remember if I was there.
You were there.
I wasn't.
You were there.
You were there.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And then abstaining?
I will abstain.
And I'm abstaining. Okay, moving on to the May 1, 2024 Planning Commission Work Session Minutes. Do we have a motion to accept those as written?
I will make a motion to accept as written.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And then maybe we have, I know you weren't there, so Bob abstains?
And Young?
Yes.
Okay. And then finally, the December 4, 2024 Planning Commission Work Session Minutes, September 4?
September 4.
Yeah, what did I say? September 4, yes. Any additions, corrections?
I'll make a motion to accept if there are no corrections.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
One abstention.
Bowden and Young.
Bowden and Young. Sounds like a law firm.
And should we introduce our new commissioner?
Might as well before the election of officers. So we have a new member with us, Dimitri Jefferson Young?
Yes.
Or is it Young Jefferson? Jefferson Young. Okay. Thanks for your commitment and service to be as part of the Planning Commission. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
And look forward to working with you.
Good.
Great.
Okay, the next order of business is the election of the 2025 Planning Commission officers.
Right. So happy 2025 Planning Commission. As you know, at the first meeting of the calendar year, since we didn't have the first meeting in January this year because there was lack of items, it is our charge to elect the officers, and that includes the chair, the vice chair, and per your bylaws, there's also a secretary. So should we start with the role of chair? I've got the duties listed there if there's any questions about them, otherwise we could open it up to any nominations.
Well, I'd like to start by assuming she's not reelected, thanking Kenzie for being chair this past year and even longer than that, so nice job.
Thank you.
Running things. I'd like to put forth Tom Rogers as a nomination for chair.
Are there other, any other names to consider?
Well, I mean, I feel Tom's been in this position before and did an excellent, excellent job, and I always liked how you handled things, so I would, I would be in support of that.
I think all of our chairs have done a good job of running things without pushing any interests, which is a good way to do it, so I'm in support. I know Tom has done it in the past, yes, he's done a good job.
One thing I'll throw out there for consideration, and obviously I'm not nominating anyone, but one thing the Planning Commission may wish to consider is the terms. Currently, we have, we have four members who technically is over their term. Now, your bylaws say that you'll serve until your successor is duly appointed by council, so just something to consider in terms of continuity if one of you is elected to an officer position and you are, council appoints a new member and you are replaced, we would need to do another election at that time, which I don't see an issue with, with doing the election, but it's just something, food for thought for the commission.
And Tom is one of those.
Yeah.
As am I.
Yes.
So in that case, the vice chair automatically then moves to the chair position?
No, it would be a new election, yeah.
A new whole election for the whole?
Not the whole election. If the vice chair stays and the chair is replaced, then there would just be an election for the chair, I believe. At that time, if someone wanted to nominate the vice chair as moving to the chair, I think that would be fine.
Okay.
Then, then you would be replacing both, or re-electing both.
Yeah.
What would be willing to serve if, you know, if, if that's, you know, if it's a month, if it's a year, you know, whatever it says?
I think we've, I think to echo Dave's comments, I think we've done, I don't know if we planned it this way or it worked out that way, but we've had somebody new with somebody, with somebody who's seasoned, somebody who's been and done, and I think that's worked out pretty well. It might be worthwhile, given the sort of unique situation, to maybe go in reverse. I realize this is kind of a word, so play it, but I was thinking, because I was thinking about if we, if we had, I was going to nominate Dave for chair, but if you'd serve as vice chair, then we get that, we get that learning, you know, experience piece in there as well. And I think, you know, you've been on the board long enough that I think that, that he would do well in that situation, and that might be a way to solve a problem and have some longevity, and have at least have somebody stability at chair if somebody does get replaced. Since we, I don't, I'm not sure I understand exactly how, who gets replaced based on who comes on.
Right.
So that might be a thought, and that might be a way to solve the problem, and take advantage of what we have as far as experience and have somebody new. I just, I would nominate Dave simply based on the fact that he's doing business downtown, and I think that gives us a lot of, I think it's a unique, a unique viewpoint, so that's, that's where that comes from.
Whoever of the student didn't get chair, I would support as vice chair.
Yeah, I kind of felt the same way.
Dave, are you comfortable stepping into the chair leadership, or are you more comfortable being vice chair first and then stepping up?
I mean, I will say that I've spent some time this afternoon thinking about, you know, nominations and who to support and that kind of thing. I truly admire Tom's approach to the pragmatic way that we need to view things here, and so I think in any, in any scenario that you have outlined, I would be in full support.
Oh, that makes it hard, doesn't it? Or easy, I mean.
So are you saying either or?
I, I would feel much more comfortable in a chair position if Tom was at my side, and I would feel very confident in supporting Tom as we transition and city council found inevitably a new, a new commissioner to take his place whenever that time might be. I think there are some downstream impacts that I think the, the Planning Commission needs to kind of weigh, and I'm not sure how intently you, you'd like to do that here and now, but I know we need to nominate and vote.
Well, if you would agree to serve as, if you would agree to serve as chair in the interest of the opinion, I'm going to renominate you. What do we move ahead?
So you're nominating Dave Henderson as?
Dave.
A chair.
And then if Tom's willing to serve as vice chair, then I think we're in good shape. But I'm nominating Dave because we're nominating chair now.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Dave nominated Tom.
Right.
Did you have a second for?
Do you need a second?
Yeah, so it's.
I don't think you need a second to nominate.
Not a second, I mean for vice.
Well, so let's do them independently, just so it doesn't get too confusing.
Yeah, you take the chair first, and then you, the chair, the new chair then does the.
Okay. So you said you wanted to nominate Dave?
Correct.
So there's three names on the, on the board right now for chair, it sounds like. That's Dave Henderson, Tom Rogers, and?
That's it. There's only been two people.
Okay, I thought I heard.
Dave Peralta's actually.
Okay, I thought I heard Chuck say he wanted to nominate Dave.
But I didn't ask him if he was going to.
No.
I know he's one of the short timers too.
Yeah, no, I am always happy to fill in as needed. I think given the discussion, having at least one of the nominees be not potential short timers is smart, so we don't lose the chair and the vice chair.
Correct.
At the same time.
Correct.
Potentially, I don't.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
But thank you. I think, I would support either Dave or Tom in both roles, so we're not really making progress here, but.
Okay, so I think Dave Peralta is politely declining.
Yes.
The nomination. So shall we vote on, well, the first motion on the table, so your choices are Tom Rogers or Dave Henderson. Shall we vote on the first nomination, which was Tom? Unless there's more discussion, I don't want to rush you here.
Just a quick comment, I think there, Ali Bob's point that we need somebody newer in the pipe should the positions come open down the road, but I think as far as leading the groups, there's something to be said for experience too, in which play case, I know Tom has some of that, I don't know how long that goes back, but if Tom steps out, then Dave could easily step in and take over with a simple nomination.
I, I think that's a great point, and I think, given that we're looking at a year window and we repeat this, I would still, if, if we're voting on Tom, I'm still going to vote yes for Tom for chair with full support for Dave either as vice chair or stepping up down the road. So I guess we're still, we need a tally of vote on Tom.
Okay. So how do we do that? Just, just say all in favor of Tom? Say here?
Yeah, let's do that, and maybe if you'd raise your hand, so it's easier for me to capture.
All right, so all in favor of Tom Rogers for chair, raise your hand.
All right. And all in favor of Dave Henderson for chair?
Chair.
Okay.
I've got speech up special.
All right.
So now we'll move, so Tom Rogers is the chair.
Tom Rogers is the chair, and then let's go ahead and finish the vice chair.
Vice chair nominations, so Dave Henderson's already been nominated for vice chair? Right? Or did, no, 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 he hasn't. So who, let's, I will nominate Dave Henderson for vice chair. Any other nominations for vice chair?
I support Dave.
All in favor of Dave Henderson, raise your hand.
Unanimed.
There we go.
Yes.
And then Secretary Trevor, I can't remember, is that just you?
Yes, it's just me.
Yeah.
I'll nominate, I'll nominate Ms. Fresh Heisen.
I'm honored.
And all in favor, oh, any other nominations for secretary? All in favor for Rachel? All right.
Okay, so congratulations, Chair and Vice Chair. I don't think we have to switch seats unless you guys want to right now.
This is effective immediately?
It is, yeah.
So I want that gavel. To calm the crowd down.
Yeah, there's a lot of people here, so you better get that gavel ready.
I'm sorry to be out of order. Yeah. I always have to worry about you, for sure.
Well, yes, and again, thank you, Kenzie, for your, for your time, and hope you have more time on, on the Planning Commission.
Me too.
So our next order of business is the, to hear the petition of Deborah H. Dolan to rezon approximately one and one hundredth of an acre located at 1600 and 1602 McVeigh Road from R1 Low Density Residential District to R3C Medium Density Residential District with conditions to allow the construction of up to three duplexes. So Rachel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of Planning Commission. The purpose of the petition is to rezon approximately one acre from R1 to R3C to allow the subdivision of two existing lots into three and the construction of up to three duplexes. Our comprehensive plan recommends low-density residential use for the property. These areas are dominated by single-family detached housing at densities of up to four units per acre. In addition to residential uses, public and institutional uses compatible in scale may also be appropriate. The existing R1 Low Density Residential District was established in 1978. The property at 1600 McVeigh Road contains a one-story residential structure. It was built in 1946 and is approximately 1,100 square feet. The property at 1602 McVeigh Road contains a one-story structure constructed in 2002, approximately 768 feet, square feet in size. The properties are surrounded by residential uses, primarily single-family homes with some duplexes, an apartment complex, and a few mobile homes nearby. If the petition is approved, the properties would be reconfigured into three parcels. A duplex is proposed on the parcel that would be located between the two existing single household structures. Future build-out could include the removal of the two existing structures and replacing those with two additional duplexes per the submitted narrative. Rezoning the properties to R3C Medium Density Residential would not align with the comprehensive plan's recommendation for low-density residential use for the property, and while R3 zoning may be found across McVeigh Road, along Middle Street, and along Leesville Road, approval of the petition may set precedence for further densification in the neighborhood. One option to develop the subject properties further without going as far as R3 would be to rezone to R2 Low Medium Density Residential District, which would align with the future land use maps recommendation and would allow an additional single household home to be constructed between the existing residences. To reiterate, there is currently a mix of housing in the surrounding area. Depending on the design, the development of up to three duplexes could visually blend with the existing neighborhood. Designs are not available at this time. The technical review committee reviewed the petition on December 3. Comments were minor in nature. The Planning Division recommends denial of the petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Who is here to speak on behalf? Thank you, and please, of course, put your name on the newspaper there and tell us a little bit more.
I was just hoping I didn't get elected to a position, so I appreciate that.
It's close.
Amy Syte, Partner and Principal Engineer of AccuPoint Survey and Design, also representing the Dolans in this hearing. As Rachel mentioned, there is R3 across the street. The Dolans do also own the property to the north, so they own basically this whole corner. And in keeping with the overall theme of what we've tried to do throughout the city and getting more, I would say, attached or, or single-family dwellings in a, in a way to make them achievable for people, they looked at their overall aggregate of what they had on this corner, and we came up with creating a new lot in the center. Both, all three of these lots are currently on drain fields, and they would then go into the city sewer system, which would be connection fees and things of that nature. The two houses at 1600 and 1602 are also owned by the Dolans. At this time, there is no imminent plan to tear those down, they are occupied by long-term tenants, much similar to many of the houses in the, in the general area. This is kind of a neighborhood area that has started a transition of largely tenant population. These are, you know, smaller, older homes that many people have purchased for investment properties to be rented to students or kind of starter houses for, for younger families. As I said, there's no imminent plans to tear these down, but in going through the process, we wanted to be straightforward in that if they were torn down at some point in time, there could potentially be an attached single family. So that's what, you know, I think the word duplex is, has a connotation, but these would definitely look like single-family homes in appearance. There is no, you know, nothing that looks like multifamily, so we would, we would ask that. There is no, you know, n- nothing that looks like multifamily, so, uh, we would, we would ask that this be approved because it is R three directly across the street, and in the general area, there's kind of a mix of all sorts of different development, so. Do you have any questions? I am happy to answer.
Thank you, and I think you'll probably just, just wait there a minute.
I'll just stay right here.
Um, anybody here to speak in favor? Anybody in opposition? Whether any voicemails or anything? Okay, great, well, the public meeting is closed, and now we can address any questions. About this? I guess my first question was, you know, looking at the neighborhood, I was a little surprised at, you know, like, kind of, the, the viewpoint on city staff. If this were three lots, would that be different? Because I noticed there's so many of those duplexes, and I'm not, like, the, 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 the design of those, it's old, you know, seventies maybe. Would, would there be things that would make a difference in city staff's thoughts about it?
You said if it were three lots already?
Three, already, already three lots.
So I think part of the reason there, well, that maybe the driver, um, for rezoning is to create the third lot. I don't know that that would change staff's recommendation. You know, and I only get to say recommend or, recommend or not recommend, unfortunately, there's a spectrum in there somewhere, but that's not really an option. And like I said, in, or pointed out in the report, there is, um, there are ways to develop, um, what is also called single-family attached, um, that may blend more visually with the neighborhood. And if, you know, if, if you guys have a design in mind, I'd love to, to follow up with you after and, and get that. It was, it was, this was a tough one, because, like I said, there is a mix, and yet, um, you know, we, we constantly hear about preserving single-family neighborhoods. And so where do you draw the line, um, between, you know, that and sort of the higher densities creeping in? And that was one recommend, uh, one reason I recommended, you know, potentially looking at the R two, um, district, which would not allow a, a duplex, but it would allow a smaller lot, single-family home to be built in between, so that, that would be an option.
Yeah, I noticed the wording, the designs had not been submitted, so I was wondering if, like, given more time, if, if, if there was, you know, maybe other consideration, that's just a thought I had.
And I don't know if this is, if there's a rendering, I guess, because we've done that in the past. Is that placed as a condition? I don't, I don't know.
Not unless you, you proffer it.
Okay.
So.
But it could be.
You could proffer it, if, if you have one or have a materials palette or, or something like that.
Okay.
Which could also be added after Planning Commission if you opted to.
Okay.
Throw through almost this entire neighborhood today.
And it definitely is residential, single-family, I mean, it's, it stands apart, it's got that lake in the back. Um, and it is different, I mean, it's, it's, this lot is set back from Leesville. It is different from what's going on, on Leesville, on the other side of Leesville, we've done a lot of recommendations in, along Leesville the past few months. And my, my train of thought has long been, if city staff is not comfortable with something, there's a reason for it, and I tend to support that, train of thought.
Yeah, in line with, uh, going forward with preserving R one, there's a reason we want to preserve the R one, and, uh, it's because there's a shortage of it, uh, in the lower two-thirds of the city, and, and even something like this, I don't know what other options there might be, townhouses, something on there, as somebody mentioned, smaller, single-family, I think Rachel mentioned that. Uh, there are options, uh, for this, so, uh, I think it's no secret that I'm, I'm in agreement with the current direction city's taking on this, so it's, it's not something that, uh, personally I support, I'm in agreement with the city's take on it.
I would agree with this question. Any other?
My, my thought would be similar to what's, what's been stated, um, and if there's no more discussion, I don't want to squelch it, but I would go ahead and make a motion that we, um, that we deny the promotion, or the, um, proposal as, as it's been, as it's been written.
A second?
Okay, so we have first and second, any other comments or anything to mention? Okay, we'll go ahead and put it to a vote then. All in favor of denying the position, I mean, the petition, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. It's unanimous denial, thank you. Good luck with city council, and maybe you'll be able to talk to Rachel more about it.
There, I'll call you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have, this is not related, it's related, but it's not part of the discussion, so, so the Strong's Auto Body Shop, or whatever it is right there, seems so out of character. Is that a, is that in compliance, is it a special use permit?
I mean, Campbell County.
I tried to pull it up on the, the, the future land use map, uh, the, the parcel map has changed recently, and you can't seem to pull up as much info as you used to.
Really?
It's not nearly as nice as it.
I might use it all the time, I just haven't.
I know the mobile version may have changed, if you're looking at it on a desktop.
I'm looking at the mobile version.
Yeah, okay.
And there's almost no info provided.
It's, there's a place you gotta click, I can follow up with you.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's a, it's a little.
Anyway, but that Strong, that Strong is on McVay's Road, and we don't need to spend time on it, it just seems so out of sync with everything else that's going on there. It's a full-on auto repair shop, and it's, it's not on Leesville, it's not as foreign as this, as this property we just discussed, but it just seemed like a really odd fit.
Yeah.
It is odd, I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah.
Surrounded by houses, right in the, right in the middle is this shop.
Yeah, interesting.
I wonder if that's like a heldover from Campbell County?
It very well could be, um, I'm trying to pull it up, but my map is also ironically not working.
You know, in the county.
Yeah.
Binsbury Road, there's several.
Yeah, and maybe one of those things where, if it goes dormant, like we've discussed, then it would not be renewed or something like that, but, and I'm not trying to bring attention to it, it just seemed really out of character with that neighborhood.
Yeah, and it, like you said, it may be a non-conforming situation, um, or grandfathered, as some people call it, but, um, I can follow up with zoning and check on it.
And I, and I'm not trying to crack down on anyone.
Sure.
It's just.
It's an older building, but it looks like they keep it up, I mean, this picture's recent, it's got a new roof, new paint.
Oh, and it was, it was the business, it was full, I mean, it was a lot going on.
Never even heard of that business.
Yeah.
Isn't that crazy?
Thank you.
All right, well, we have nothing else on the agenda for today.
Thank you all.
If there's anything, uh, we will have a meeting in two weeks.
Uh, yes, you should, um.
February twelfth?
Yes, February twelfth, still more than two weeks, but.
I saw the Wheaton ones coming up, all right.
Should be, yeah.
Wow, yeah.
And we'll also have a floodplain ordinance update that we'll be bringing to you then as well.
Flood ordinance?
Floodplain, yeah.
Okay, great. All right, well, any, anyone want to leave, any opposition leaving?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Well, I don't hear anybody complaining, so we'll adjourn.